It's two to five in the United States of America. Into the Republic, witness this justice, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That nation, you did them. I'm gonna determine if you have a list to your, we'll all, please. Thank you. We'll move to item number three, approval of the second, in my ability for meeting. And then also to file on February fifth of twenty twenty five CDA. Many development authority minutes, the March tenth, twenty twenty five Board of Public Works. April fourteenth to twenty twenty five Board of Public Works. The May fifth, twenty twenty five Finance and Personnel. May thirteenth, twenty twenty five Public Safety Committee. May fourteenth, twenty twenty five Architectural Review Board Minutes as presented. Motion in second, please.
I'll make an ocean.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any changes? All right. Motion in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. That motion carries. Go to number four on our agenda. Personally requesting to be heard. Wish to be heard on any item that would pertain to the other. Right, seeing on hearing now, we'll bond business presented by the president. Um, given the fact that we are now, um, we have the public lively library, um, we need to appoint two additional board members from the village of Grafton. I submitted Eric Edner and Eric Grant. If you all saw their, um, other applications. Um, and again, we'll be letting it talk briefly about that and, uh, look for a motion in a second.
I'm told.
Okay. Great, Amy and Andy, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries and. Updates on the library board. Uh, last, a bit of information presented by myself today, since I'm sure you've all seen the, uh, uh, press that, um, uh, Mr. Tice has been, um, selected as the, um, city administrator for the village of West Bend, um. Probably within the next hour, he will be approved by the common council of West Bend. However, at this point in time, we do not have his resignation and, uh, we will look to that resignation as soon as there is, uh, action by the common council. I do want to let the board know that we will probably have a closed session meeting, uh, the first, uh, meeting of July. So we can discern the process moving forward. In the meantime, Jesse's last day is, uh, pending right now, August fifth, correct? So, um, we still have forty-five days-ish, um, to have Jesse as administrator. And also to come up with a plan to replace him. So we'll be having that meeting, Village Board, only, uh, after next and, uh, the meeting, first meeting in July. Questions? Very good. Thank you very much for that. We'll go to re- resolution ordinances, action items. To approve the third amendment to the Ozaki Central Fire Department Agreement. Jesse, would you please?
Certainly, uh, being forwarded from the, uh, Ozaki Central Fire Department Board is an amendment of the third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement. This amendment contains a number of housekeeping updates, which are clarification in nature. There are no substantive changes to the agreement itself. Um, previously adopted amendments, uh, were shown in blue text in the attached documentation. Um, proposed updates were shown in the attachment as redlined text. Um, I won't go through each of them as most are cleanup of past secretary treasurer references that used to be a dual role. Um, that was separated out by the fire board in an earlier iteration of the contract whereby the secretary is actually a staff person, um, who conducts, um, or compiles agendas, uh, compiles minutes, publishes the proper notices and so forth on behalf of the fire board. Um, and the treasurer is a standalone, um, position, uh, is a contracted position by the OCFD, uh, on their board to, uh, handle the reporting of the financials. So the majority of the items in this amendment are cleanup of those previously dual role. Um, and cleaning it up to note the appropriate singular position, um, correctly. Um, items also include clarifications of how the, uh, budget operates on a, that the budget operates on a calendar year. Uh, clarification that the first year cost share formula utilized the twenty twenty-two call volume data and removal of any unnecessary references. And then also, uh, an audit, uh, results are due September first to allow more time for completion. Clarification that the OCFD budget operates on the calendar year is once again called out. Um, but this is about consistency and, uh, making, making, helping the agreement to match reality, um, of the situation. So all of the, uh, updates are set forth in the IFC. Um, I did summarize them at a high level. This is coming unanimously recommended from the OCFD board.
And I see those who talk will approve these amendments that.
Yes, I am.
Very good. What's the status? Motion to approve the third amendment of the OCFD, the talking central fair department agreement as presented. Motion second. Motion.
Second.
All right, we have motion in second. Any questions? Sir, this end. This. Done. Okay, very good motion in second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Let's go to the review of public protection, public fire protection third.
This is also an item coming forward from the Ozaki Central Fire Department Board of Directors. Um, at their May twenty-eighth meeting, they voted to make a formal request to the village of Grafton for consideration of the portion of the public fire protection charge that is, uh, invoiced to the fire department. Now, the fire protect, the public fire protection charge, uh, can be known by a couple of different names. It has been referred to as a hydrant rental fee or a public service commission tariff. Um, that said, this charge can be handled in, it is a mandated charge by the public service commission at the state of Wisconsin with regards to the use of fire hydrants in the water involved thereof. Uh, the public service commission has mandated, uh, public fire protection charge, uh, for all communities. Um, however, it does allow flexibility in how the charge can be collected. Um, for instance, it could be paid by entirely by the fire department, paid entirely by utility customers, paid entirely by the municipality in the form of tax levy, or paid by a combination thereof. Uh, the village of Grafton currently falls within that category as, um, since nineteen ninety-nine, twenty-five percent of the public fire protection charge has been passed from the utility through the village of Grafton onto the fire department. And the remaining seventy-five percent of that charge has been placed on utility bills and paid by the users. The Graftons, uh, in total, the village of Grafton's annual fire protection charge is about eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Two hundred, just over two hundred and sixteen thousand of that is paid by the fire department on an annual basis. And the other six hundred and five thousand is placed upon the utility bills and paid by the residents and businesses who are subject to billing. By way of comparison, our neighboring community, the village of Stockville, has historically placed their entire public fire protection charge on their utility bills. With the request for consideration coming from the fire department, I wanted to lay out several options that the village board could consider. The village board could consider adjusting the utility billing. In essence, moving that twenty-five percent that is charged to the fire department, moving that over to have the entire fire protection charge placed on the utility bills, um, throughout the community. There are approximately fifty-three hundred utility users that receive a bill. Um, that would amount to an average of about forty-dollar adjustment per utility bill, but that does depend on the water meeting meter sizing of that utility user. The larger the meter, the larger the charge. So it would be more than forty dollars. Smaller meter would be less than forty dollars. So this is a very high level approximation. Um, not hard and fast math. I want to be very clear with the board about that, but just to give an idea of what it might mean across the community if the village board would wish to, um, entertain the notion of placing that twenty-five percent onto the utility bill. Thus, one hundred percent of the fire protection charge would be on the utility bill. Uh, must be noted that this would be considered a water rate change by the public service commission and would be subject to their final review. So the village board may wish to move forward with this. It, that final answer does not lie with the village board though, other than to say, let's apply to the public service commission to do this. It is the public service commission's authority to either reject or amend that request in that it could be, um, rejected wholesale. The charge could remain the same and that twenty-five percent gets placed on the utility bills, um, for payment by the users. Or the public fire protection charge itself could be amended and then placed on the utility bill, either up or down. So there are, um, um, repercussions there to that, that course of action. Um, we could utilize, uh, or an option number two, utilize tax levy. Um, fund the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars via tax levy. Staff strongly recommends against this for the following reasons. The option would require a reduction of tax levy funding to different program areas of the budget such as police, parks, public works. Um, the village's annual budget also has to address any increases in village operational costs and/or employee wage or benefit costs. In essence, that two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of tax levy towards a fire protection fee would take away from other departments and/or general operational costs of the village. Also, it is not anticipated the OCFD budget would be reduced by the two hundred and sixty, sixteen thousand dollars. So that would mean that money, that amount of money is still going to, or that level of tax levy support is still going to the fire department. So we would have to find that two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars within our general fund area or capital area of the village budget. Option three, it is technically an option, albeit a non-exciting one, maintain status quo of invoicing the fire department for a portion for that twenty-five percent portion of the public fire protection fee. Uh, with that, those are the options I believe that, uh, would be most prudent, uh, for consideration. Um, different iterations thereof, I'm sure, could be, um, determined by the village board through the course of discussion. Um, however, just for simplicities and straightforward sake, um, I believe those are the, uh, best three for consideration. Uh, with that, I would request, um, direction to the village administrator to prepare a request for a review of the public fire protection charge by the public service commission. Um, however, that request would have to be presented back to the village board for final approval prior to submission to the state.
Okay. Correct. Prepare request for review, um, public protection, third, by the PSC. Public Service Commission to be presented back to the village board for consideration. We'll bring it up, please. Thank you, Amy and Andy. You have questions?
Do you have Stockville listed? Do you have a pulse on like anybody else in the area and what they do?
I did not. I simply took Stockville as they're a member of the OCFD, um, and it's directly relatable. Um, I could absolutely check around what other communities in the area do. That wouldn't be a problem. I, I simply grabbed Stockville because it's applicable. Uh, it, and not to be flip, it, it's the public service commission at the state of Wisconsin level. Um, they have, um, the ultimate authority in determining what the financial needs are for the utility. Um, regardless of municipality, it's not that they would be picking on Grafton per se, but they have that ultimate authority. Um, it's very similar to, uh, a larger rate case. If we go to them, we can justify to the nth degree that our village utility needs X and we want to adjust our, you, um, water rate by set amount. The public service commission could, in reviewing all the information, say, no, no, we're going to authorize Y and you're going to have to charge Z. Um, so they have that ultimate authority. Um, and so that's just something we need to be aware of, that it could be altered by them. This is a very simplistic type of request versus a full-blown rate case, but the potential is there that they could change that amount.
Uh, with. You would like to. See, please, just tell me what option you would. Both that. I said that before we vote. Just.
Thank you.
Yep. Very good. On Danny.
Um, fire, three percent. The fire work. Um, what the public service commission says in their, in their, on their website, in their literature. Um, that's, that's, that charge is to municipal fire. Uh, because there are very few combined fire departments in the state of Wisconsin. That may be just something that was in the. Uh, put in there. Um, but it, it appears that shared services are going to be from a lot of places. So my personal opinion is we need to get the, uh, PSC to sound into this to see. Um, what they have written with actions today because we, uh, don't have a municipal fire department. Probably can't be charged. Because it's not in this town. So it would, for me to have them chime in and say, um, that option, that option. It's unfortunate, but when you're going to plug directions. Uh, my personal opinion is it should be all.
I think.
Jesse, you note here that since nineteen ninety-nine, twenty-five percent of the fire protection charge has been passed through. Did that happen even when it was a volunteer?
Volunteer departments of nineteen ninety-nine, yes, it would have been charged to them. Yep. That is, that was adopted by resolution by the village board to, um, fund this public fire protection charge that way. So, yeah. Mm-hmm.
It should.
I don't know. I did not go back. Mm-hmm.
Probably we are the only community in all of Wisconsin, and including the North Shore. And the North Shore Fire Department has four communities that, um, have joined together to combine and be the North Shore Fire Department. We're the only community that charges our fire departments for water. So that's concerning to me. Um, especially now that we have a, a new department, a consolidated department, we've given them a budget, we forgot to kind of add other costs that they might need.
We did the best we could with that budget. I, I appreciate where you're going with this, but.
Um, so this certainly was not something I think that they expected. Again, costs come up and there are certain charges. Um, but for, for them to have to now come up with another quarter of a million dollars, I think is out of, um, out of their realm. Um, I, I agree that I think that we need to go with, um, option one. And I'm hoping that we can do this as soon as possible, so that we can get some answers and go forward.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I would also be in favor of option one. I do think that, uh, moving it towards the utility bill would be a better end result for the fire department in general. It does bring up concerns that if we do it where we're charging the wa- uh, the fire department the water, that Stockville may join in a similar fashion, causing more issues for the fire department.
Thank you. Sure.
The two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that's, um, being requested to be paid, where does that number come from?
That is the tariff set by the PSC. Well, a portion thereof, our overall tariff set by the PSC is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And that twenty-five percent was established by resolution back in nineteen ninety-nine to be charged to the fire department.
Okay, so. Do you? I've been up in Washington, and retired captain for the. And after the second one, then he explained to me that Washington, what's going on there is they're not charged. Um, the municipality is not charged. The town of Fort Washington is charged based off of the tanks that go out and are, you know, um, that go out and respond to calls in the town of Washington. So, um, upon further, uh, investigation, um, calling around to some places, there's no other municipality in Ozawa County that char- that charges their fire department for water. And furthermore, the North Shore Fire Department, which is the one sole, um, you know, combined fire department in Southeastern Wisconsin that's been around for at least fifteen years, if not more, they also do not charge their municipalities water. So something about this just, um, this kind of offering in regards to the fact that like there are no meters on any of the fire hydrants. So we, so this number to me is, um, I, it just doesn't add up to me and I don't, furthermore, the fire department is providing our municipality a service. So it to me is in, it's, it's in poor taste of the village to be charging a fire department for water that they use to provide protection for us. So with that said, um, I would definitely be, um, I, I want the public service commission to, to, is this for us? I think that's fair. And it would be, um, I would need to pursue the water rate change.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am in favor of option one. My only concern is with this additional law placed on utility bill, withhold we approve it, of course, for the water increase. Will that put us over limit where this entire would be approved?
Yeah, we'll have to be part of the inquiry with the PSC because we do have our standard water rate that we did previously approve. That rate change is forthcoming, so that will have to be all play into this request. Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you. Um. Yep. One. Yes, to me to be able to, um, see, um, the recommendation is, um, it's. I think trying to compare us to Fort Washington is great for how we compare our brand ourselves to what people who, the area of Fort Washington is all ended. So, uh, they're also serviced by S, we're certainly by the water, water. So, uh, again, we're different, but I still think it's a great idea for us to get this off the board. I would really like to see our leaders' water bills go up any higher. I think at this point in time, it's a, it's, it's good to move that, but we can have some consistency. So I would be in favor of option one. It appears we're all in favor of option one to the point. If you'd like to address the board, we'll still hold it up there.
Yeah, I just have one more question. Um, and I would more, this is something for practice or jetty. How do parts of the fire department charge the town? For water? When they go into a fire?
Off the top of my head, I don't have an answer to that question.
Right, they don't want to be getting hunger from the municipal water supply. They may pump it out of local water base, so it's almost like impossible to figure out how they pay the amount at this point in time. Well, full, I don't think, tankers will all fold, but I think that's probably, um, at this point in time, a good question. I'll recognize that back. Thank you.
Sure, because that may change things in the future for the towns. The charge of water.
Yeah, this is a, this is a hydrant fee.
Correct.
And hydrants.
Correct.
No, but they fill up at our hands and take our water to them, so.
And as well as Stockville takes water from our affairs and, uh, to the fires. That's all. Anybody else had comments on this?
If. Question would be to do the fire trucks, call, go back to the station. Full tank of water, are they getting from the resources? I mean, that would be a question asked.
Yes, I can look into those operational aspects. Uh, I can speak with the chief about that and, and provide a feedback. Yep, no problem.
Very good. So. Here. Director of the demonstrator, prepare a request for review, the public care protection charge. I mean, the PSC sent it to the board for consideration, so we're going to, that's, I think we, you're going to see. So I'm in favor of saying. That can carry it. So I talked to the, the truck, it's thirty-four sixteen thirteen.
Absolutely. Uh, a series of traffic accidents at the intersection of State Highway sixty and Thirteenth Avenue, um, have become an alarming trend. Most recently, a vehicle attempting to travel southbound on Thirteenth Avenue across Highway sixty was struck by an eastbound vehicle, uh, resulting in a, in a private re- residence being struck, um, and requiring repairs. To address the immediate concern, the village, um, is, uh, or has installed new signage on southbound Thirteenth Avenue, um, directly adjacent to Veterans Park to allow right turns only onto Highway sixty, it's the Highway sixty. The previous signage was no left turn, straight through and right turns were allowed. This has been updated to right turns only. Um, with that, that sign is at the intersection. There is a right turn ahead sign, um, uh, placed back away from the intersection, but then also a construction type sign saying change in traffic pattern ahead even further back to make it abundantly clear to folks traveling southbound on Thirteenth to, uh, mind that new pattern. Um, to address, this is a immediate, short-term, um, response. Something we could do very quickly to address the concerns that have been raised. However, the need for a longer term and more permanent type of solution, uh, is there. Uh, to address the situation from a long-term standpoint, staff is recommending that a traffic study of the area be conducted by an outside consultant to analyze the traffic data and provide options for the village board to consider on how to further improve traffic safety in the area, whether that be permit, more permanent fixtures, permanent markings, um, uh, uh, road adjustments, uh, roadway adjustments, what have you. But in short, having a qualified traffic engineer review, comprehensively review the area and the situation at hand and bring back recommendations in the form of report. This is an unbudgeted expense, uh, due to the unforeseen situation that we're dealing with. Therefore, village board authorization would be required, um, to move forward with this project. Staff did obtain two quotes from qualified traffic engineering firms, TADI and RA Smith. Um, this, uh, village has worked with both. Uh, the quotes were attached to the IFC. Uh, the I, the scope of services in both quotes is very similar between the two proposals, however, there was a significant cost difference. Uh, the TADI, um, overall contract came in at just over twenty-nine thousand dollars. The RA Smith contract came in at about twelve thou- just over twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand one hundred, to be specific. That does include a traffic signal analysis, which was a separate line item charge in the other proposal. Both firms are available to start work upon receiving village approval. With that, I am requesting of the village board authorization to enter into an agreement with RA Smith in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred dollars for a Wisconsin sixty and Thirteenth Avenue traffic and safety study.
Thank you. Jesse, I propose, unnamed, where did this come from?
Contingency.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, for a motion, uh, bring to the court session, uh, to, during the RA Smith, uh, traffic study. See twelve thousand one hundred dollars for the area of Wisconsin sixty. Safety study.
I'll make the motion. One second.
Hey. Let's, uh, let's, any discussion on this? Let's go to the first.
I understand the need for the, the study to be done here, but my concern is that the signs already put up, you know, right turn on that, are we going to get a true comprehensive evaluation of the situation at that intersect? Like it's twenty-one percent.
Yes, it will be communicated that this change in traffic pattern was immediately implemented by the village to alleviate or what we believe will initially alleviate the situation. However, we want, we are going to make it abundantly clear to that consultant that we're looking for permanent solutions. Right now, we believe this will help. Whether it is the appropriate permanent solution, we don't know as, as we're not traffic engineers. So that's where we want that report. Very good question though, but yeah, we're looking for permanent solutions with this report. Yep. I don't recall. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Remembering in part. Have we worked with Ari quote before?
We have worked with both of these firms. Yes, yep.
Thank you.
I was like, when I saw the one, and the one should be on. No, that was C D I. And I did notice just one thing that was different, just glancing at it, that with Ari Smith, there is no visits in person, whereas with Taddy, there was one, but that's never get their first floor at the end of their lives.
Yes, and Zoom is our reality, um, which a lot of these outside consultants are utilizing. We're seeing that in our different projects here in the village, whether it's the, uh, classification and compensation study. We, we've had virtual meetings or, um, other projects that we're doing where consultants are definitely leveraging that online forum. Um, so the staff didn't have a concern with that as we brought these forward to the board. Um, so the staff didn't have a concern with that as we brought these forward to the board.
A B concern. I think that great please that the chief right in that input note out um also assumed to be the heat map. All accidents that have occurred last three years. And it should surprise no one that goes right up and down Ivy sixty. From sixteen, I'm sorry, from twelfth, thirteenth, seventeenth Craft and Avenue as well as Fort Washington. Um, I agree that we need to have a traffic engineer look at this because we have a lot of folks coming forward with many interesting ideas, um such as bollards, such as left turns. Uh, a lot of great ideas out there, but I think the traffic engineer needs to be able to make that decision for us. Uh, I think, uh, you know, obviously, uh, a lot of things have changed in our village and the traffic is um traffic is increased. So I think we need to take a look at that that section very carefully. The fact that it's um changed to yield signs on 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 twelfth uh to allow people coming from Wisconsin to turn right on onto Highway sixty. The other thing we've got to keep in mind with this too is it is a state highway and the DOT does have ultimate decision on what takes place on that highway. So I think having a traffic engineer behind us is a great idea. So um without further discussion from anybody, I'll look for a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go to public works. Resolution for the compliance maintenance annual report.
Certainly, I can give a quick high level introduction. However, Director Greece can fill in any granular details to this. This is an annual um report that needs to be submitted to the state of Wisconsin on behalf of the village's utility. Um, this particular report does require a resolution to accompany it as part of the submittal process. Um, as as usual, um, I don't want to take it for granted, but as usual, our utility has graded out very, very well um with our policies, procedures and practices. And um the report does reflect that. And um with that, uh, look for a um approval of the resolution to submit said report.
As this is the resolution, I need an offer of motion and also. Very good. Nice work. Thank you very much. Discussion.
I just like that um the link was there so that we could look at it with some of the works. So however, we get the links on these items would be appreciated. So that was great.
Yep, staff followed up with the clerk's office um after our last meeting, and that's uh what we're looking to do with the packets moving forward. Uh, that was raised as a point, and we wanted to make sure we addressed it. Yep.
Thank you.
Certainly, this is an additional expense um for the single port uh radio registers. Uh, there was a price increase uh with the total contract amount not to exceed two hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred ninety eight dollars. Um, this is uh part of the ongoing tariff issue at the federal level uh that impacted our water meter projects. Uh, we received most of our order, however, part of it did fall um into a a timeframe in which tariffs were enacted or increased, um hence the additional cost. However, we are still with still within uh budgeted funds. Director Greece can't speak to particulars. However, the motion to uh approve is recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Very good. I look for a motion to recommend the village board approve an additional ten thousand seven hundred for me. For radio registers price increase for the total contract not to exceed two hundred eleven thousand seven hundred ninety eight hundred. Thank you, Andy and Dave. Any question? Public works. Very good. A moment, favor say aye. I propose that motion carries um. Contractual agreement with Green Bay Pipe and TV, Jesse?
Yes, this is our annual sanitary sanitary sewer um cleaning and televising uh contract uh by DNR regulations. We have to televise so many linear feet of pipe uh here in the village per year. Uh, this particular contract comes in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with additional authorization of five thousand dollars for any heavy cleaning and or root cutting as needed. Uh, the total not to exceed is thirty five thousand dollars for the contract work by Green Bay Pipe and TV as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Very good. Motion is second to recommend uh to the village board enter into contractual agreement with Green Bay Pipe and TV of Green Bay, Wisconsin. And it's the name to provide sanitary sewer mainline cleaning and televising services in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with additional authorization of five thousand dollars for heavy cleaning and root cutting as needed with the total project cost not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Concern Kevin, any questions at all? Andy?
Uh, I guess my question is directed to the utilities director more than anything else. At what point in time um do we get to a a level of doing our own televising pipe and equipment to do it ourselves?
With the empire. So I I don't know. I know some other utilities have them. We just always chose to contract out. Quite a um a thumb drive with the data of them. And look at it, I guess.
And and I know several under contracts and quality of product you're getting from this part.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Very good. Any brief questions? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed and carries uh crane and uh crane engineering on Timberly.
Yes, this is a uh contract for a uh um rehabilitation of the self uh final clarifier at our uh treatment plant um for specifics on what exactly a self final clarifier is, because I'm not even going to attempt putting an administrator spin on what that equipment is. Um, Director Greece can speak to that. However, this is um equipment that is um in need of some general rehabilitation to ensure it stays in good working order at our wastewater treatment plant. Um, it is coming forward on a service contract in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy three thousand three hundred eighty seven dollars on a recommendation from our Board of Public Works.
Motion is requested to recommend village board enter into contractual agreement with Crane Engineering of Timberly, Wisconsin to complete self final clarifier rehab uh in the amount not to exceed one hundred seventy three thousand three hundred eighty seven dollars. You approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Very good. Lisa, Andy, any questions? Good. Anyone else? All right. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries uh number five uh the change order number one twenty twenty five street utility project.
Yes, before the village board this evening is a recommended change order not to exceed two thousand three hundred sixty six dollars and ninety nine cents. In particular, this change order um is for tree removal as a few a few extra trees were added to the list for removal um after the bids for the road program had been um accepted and we were moving forward. Part of the reason um for the additional trees being added was the uncertainty of the final road width due to pub ongoing public comments. Another reason is that once staff started actually marking the trees, it was decided that the number of trees to be removed had to increase for for undisrupted construction flow later in the season. Um, basically to ensure there was enough room to operate to do the um infrastructure updates as needed. Uh, unlike a majority of construction contractors removing stumps with with the excavator, uh Vinton does actually use a third party for stump grinding. Um, therefore, there is uh some additional cost associated with some of the larger trees uh and their subcontractor did in fact um request the additional charges, hence the change order. Um, staff does support the change order. Uh, we feel it is reasonable, especially since not all of the trees for the removal were initially identified on the bid plans for the reasons stated before. This is coming uh recommended out of Board of Public Works.
Motion and second for the change order number one to the twenty twenty five street utility project in an amount not to exceed two thousand three hundred sixty six dollars and ninety seven cents.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Very good. Any questions come here?
Jesse, you then roughly know how many additional trees will be removed?
I'm sorry Victor did report that to me and I did not write it down. I don't have a strong number to give you. I can roll. Thank thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. Yes. That, yeah, the tree planting is all a part of either that project itself or our forestry program in a given year. Yep.
Chief. Did them off. Oppose carries lastly. Uh, two twenty twenty five three utility project exceed one thousand eight hundred and seventy eight hundred and eighty cents.
Absolutely. This this is a little bit more nuanced, uh yet not a significant, not a large change order. However, um what the contractors and staff found on site um was that while installing the new sanitary main on Fall Street from one existing manhole over to the next, they realized there were a few uh sections of pipe that the existing sewer was much deeper than the plans called for. Um, this was based on taking a look at the elevation at one manhole, the elevation at the next manhole and making the very safe assumption that the pipe is pitched but running straight. When in fact, that pipe did not run straight across from one manhole to another. There was actually a deviation in elevation at one point, almost four feet in difference um in order to make sure that the um new pipe sections were placed in a way that everything remained functional. Um, the decision was made to remove and relay these few sections of pipes uh to the existing depth to allow for, again, proper functioning of the private lateral connections. The lack of ASBILTS surveys in the area um were part of the issue, but that being said, that does happen in other areas of the village, and it is generally speaking, very safe to assume from point A to point B, the pipe is going to run straight. In this case, it did not. So with that significant amount of offset, a change order was required um and is brought forward um not to exceed uh recommendation from the Board of Public Works.
Motion to approve change order to number two to twenty twenty five street utility project in the amount not to exceed. Any questions? Or? All in favor say aye. Oppose carries. Uh, let's go to the bank five nine.
Uh, thank you. The next item is coming forward out of the Board of Finance and Personnel. This is an authorization to move the village's banking um from our current uh Bank of Cornerstone Bank um or currently Horicon State Bank who was cornerstone. Um, the transition occurred during our last service contract period. That service contract period was coming up um to expiring. Perfect timing for a request for proposals. Paul and his staff went forward with that request for proposals, solicited local banks, received um uh different um responses back and through the vetting process, made a recommendation to the Finance and Personnel Committee and now in turn to the village board to authorize um uh moving into an arrangement with Bank Five Nine for our banking services. Director Stodhar is here to answer any specific questions on either the process or the recommendation.
I look for a motion to recommend the board trustees to authorize Bank Five Nine and Commonwealth. Over. Andy and Dave, any questions on? Rest of the board? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, go to the rest of the Rockbridge Landing subdivision phase one final plant with conditions listed on Google.
Certainly, a very straightforward item here um as we've come to find out through ongoing uh legal review of the situation. As the board may recall, at our last meeting, we did table this matter. Uh, there was a difference between uh documentation sources being the uh plat showing as a dedication uh or the plat showing the road in place. However, the construction plans showed it as a dedication. There was conflicting information there. Long story short, staff felt strongly that that's stub portion of the road should be built. Upon further legal review, we cannot condition that on the final plat as the plat itself is consistent with the preliminary plat. Therefore, in accord with Attorney Herbrand's memo that was published to the village board, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution as presented by the Plan Commission.
Very good. I look for a motion to approve a resolution for Boxbridge Landing subdivision phase one final flat with conditions listed in the Google Revolution.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, Kevin, they send.
Good ones. There were um thank you. Um, Jessica, I just had a question about the original plan commission meeting. Um, there were a couple of other items that you had recommended, um but those did not make the list as well. Is that correct? There was the stub, Beagle Drive. There was Ediflock Camera in a location.
Dropped as part of the negotiations with the developer, correct? Correct. In our discussions with the developer, uh in good faith, the developer uh recognizes that it is in uh everyone's best interest to route as much traffic as feasible to the north. However, we do understand that there are times he may have to come southbound with his traffic. So um for lack of a better way to put it, we have a gentleman's agreement on that, and that condition was taken off of the uh resolution.
Some questions? All right. Thank you for giving us a little. Initially, and grateful that we were able to get this corrected. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Village Administrator Report.
Nope, that's all right. Getting my packet here. All right, for the administrative report, just a few items here this evening. Uh, staff had a pre-construction meeting for the Black Hawk Trail Project. This is the connection of the recreation trail segment that will connect the uh Black Hawk subdivision with the Blue Stem subdivision to provide pedestrian access throughout. Um, the pre-construction meeting went very well, and we do anticipate an August start with a four four week duration for the project. Um, staff is in the process of finalizing the uh budget submittal for the Government Finance Officers Association review and um recognition. Um, we are once again looking to um achieve um uh um award winning status with that. Um, and so we're finalizing that packet to send in within the next week or so. And then last but not least, based upon uh resident feedback, we are um in essence, learning how to best utilize the new splash pad amenity at Riverbend Park. Staff continues to work on refining the hours of operations for the splash pad, and we currently sit at Monday through Friday, ten AM to seven PM, Saturday and Sunday, ten AM to six PM. And the duration of the activation of the water features um is adjusted as well. Um, just to monitor just general usage and the cost of operating that uh facility. So that is an ongoing um project, if you will, where we are interacting with the neighbors and the community at large on how to best manage that amenity for everyone's enjoyment. Um, so that is a work in progress, and the pool is open and off to the races minus the slight cold front that rolled through.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, look to approve the operator's license. Our from Austin and second. Motion for. And given you did any questions?
I I do have one question about one of the but it's just listed as Kinseth. Is that a hotel group? Is that what that is? Okay, thank you.
There's now a listing.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. For the denial of the uh operator's license based on uh please pardon the recommendation with Tracy Vance. Look for motion in second.
I'll send him.
Motion to deny. Second, any question?
Just clarifying the motion to deny based on the chief's report. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Carries. We'll go to um the approval of issues of various establishments.
If if I may give a quick introductory remark prior to the board uh taking this up for action. While the While the board can take action to approve these licenses, as noted in the IFC, there are several of the business entities that have outstanding inspection requirements. The clerk will not actually issue said license until those are rectified and any outstanding fees paid. However, the village board may approve the issuance, but that is ultimately contingent upon complying with the outstanding inspection orders and or any outstanding fees.
So I will be looking for a motion to approve the issuance of renewals of various establishments attached for Class A, Class B promoted malt beverage, Class A and Class B intoxicating liquor and Class C wine licenses for July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Licensing period subject to the satisfaction of all instructions and outstanding financial obligations to the village of Crafton as listed on the IFC. Motion in second, please.
Motion.
I'll second.
I'll take Lisa on the second. Andy, questions on the line here? Very good. We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll go to approval of issues of cigarette, tobacco, vaping device licenses.
Similarly, this is an annual issuance of the license as recommended by the clerk set forth in the IFC.
Great. For the IFC, I'll be looking for a motion. And a second. We will approve cigarette, tobacco, and leopard vaping device licenses for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six licensing period as presented. Any insert questions at all? Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. My motion carries. I'll look for a motion to approve village expenditures.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave and Kevin. Any questions at all? I did not see anything come through. Lisa.
I don't have a question about this, but before we adjourn, could I just ask, now that the fire chief is here, could we ask him the questions that we had earlier?
Sure.
I, I, I report back to the board. No problem.
There is motion in second for approval of village expenditures. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Dave and Andy. All in favor, say aye. Very much.